Good afternoon, I'd like to call the April 17th meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Brian Peake and Deanna Rood.
Thank you, welcome. The open forum is the section of the Board Agenda time for members of the community to provide comments to the Board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled Board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and that instance, the Chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each Board meeting prior to the open forum Agenda meeting. There are zero registered speakers for tonight's meeting, so the open forum is hereby closed. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sopchik.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I'm going to defer to Dr. Corb and Dr. Larson on this. Judy, want to go first?
Okay. The first award that we want to highlight is the John and Sue Ann Bruch Excellence Award. And this award was established to celebrate outstanding contributions and leadership by community college faculty and staff. We have two employees that were nominated and selected. They were nominated by their colleagues to receive this award. And it was a fairly comprehensive application or nomination that had to be submitted, and they had, the winners had to demonstrate accomplishments in the following areas. Commitment to the scholarship of teaching and learning, motivating others to learn, respecting diverse talents and ways of learning, developing positive relationships, and modeling leadership through collaboration and support. So we had two individuals that were selected. The first of those is Bee Peake. Bee, if you want to come forward. Bee is recently retired from her role as coordinator in the Adult Basic Education/General Education Development Program. Bee served as an adult educator at Johnson County Community College for 29 years, and she taught adult literacy, basic math, and GED test preparation, detached the lives of thousands of students in profound ways, and she was one of those true go-to people who colleagues and peers turned to for wisdom, advice, and encouragement. The Johnson County Adult Education Program would not have enjoyed the success that it has without her experience, dedication, and leadership. So Bee, thank you very much.[212.26][212.26](APPLAUSE). The second award winner is Deb Williams. So Deb, if you would come forward. Deb is Associate Professor in Science. And, okay, so I went through the whole list of her accomplishments, and it was like pages. So I picked out a few things to say here. Deb does model a commitment to the scholarship of teaching and learning. And it was quite impressive to me as I started reading through this. Her commitment to learning is exemplified in the fact that she has two bachelor's degrees, three master's degrees, and a Juris Doctorate. And just for fun, she's currently working on another master's degree. So she certainly models the learning part of that. She teaches a variety of courses for Johnson County Community College students, and her passion is evident in the way she implements new and innovative learning experiences for her students. She serves as the President of the Faculty Association and has served on 21 other Johnson County Community College committees and task forces, but who's counting?[288.19][288.19](LAUGHTER). Deb's accomplishments are many, and she truly models excellence in teaching and learning. And Deb, we thank you for everything that you do.[298.33][298.33](APPLAUSE). The next award is the Exemplary Leader Award, and this is the Chair Academy's 2014 International Exemplary Leadership Award. And this award goes to Debbie Rulo in Continuing Education. And Debbie, there's a variety of reasons that Debbie was nominated by her supervisor and peers for this award, but Continuing Education has gone through a significant reorganization in the last two or three years. And although all of the group has participated in that reorganization, Debbie has been the person who has been the day-to-day individual carrying out the operations of the reorganization that has taken place. And just to name a few things that they have done, they've seen a 25% turnover in people in Continuing Education, so they've gone through a variety of job reviews and hirings and getting the right people moved around in the right places. People had to learn to be budget administrators that had never been budget administrators before. They've gone through a significant cross-training effort in Continuing Ed. They also went through and completely revamped how they do their processes, and they set up new metrics for the branch. And I could go on with some of the other changes that have taken place there in the last couple of years. And we've talked about, you know, all these changes and making these changes and how well it's gone. And Karen and I were just talking recently that one of the reasons that it's gone so well is because of the leadership of Debbie Rulo. She has taken on all of those challenges with amazing competence and professionalism. And Debbie, we really thank you, and you're very deserving of this award.[413.06][413.06](APPLAUSE). Okay, and the next one is Mary Kay Eisber. Mary, if you would come forward. Mary Kay was named Kansas Master Educator of the Year for 2014 at the recent annual meeting of the Kansas Adult Educators Association. This prestigious award is presented to the individual who exemplifies professional adult education in the state of Kansas. Mary Kay has served students in the Johnson County Adult Education Program for nearly 20 years. Her roles have included both instructional and administrative responsibilities in ESL and ABE-GED. She has also led and participated in many program and statewide initiatives enhancing adult education programs. Mary Kay, thank you very much, and congratulations.[468.62][468.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. And the final award is for Johnson County Community College. JCCC was recently recognized as the number-one digital community college by the Center for Digital Education in the large community college category for those schools with 10,000 or more students. This award recognizes digital and emerging technologies such as use of mobile devices and technology integration into curriculum, strategic planning, data management, and professional development. The top 10 winning colleges reflect a comprehensive implementation of technology supporting the institution's operations, as well as serving students, faculty, and administrators. The awards reception was held on April 6th during the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Conference in Washington, DC. And I want to thank Denise Moore for her leadership of information services, as well as everyone here at the college who works to support technology. Denise had the opportunity to accept this award on the college's behalf, and at this time, would like to present this award to the Board of Trustees.[543.66][543.66](LAUGHTER).[548.16][548.16](APPLAUSE).
I believe, does that conclude our special recognitions? I would just like to take this opportunity to say to the community off-campus that you've just seen a number of examples of people who are passionate and care about their profession, that they do so many extra things that require a lot of hours to complete. And we know that the students on campus are the beneficiaries of it, but the community needs to understand that these are but a few examples of what makes your community college so wonderful and well-esteem around the country. And I would just like to say again, congratulations to all of you that have put so many hours in, that are recognized tonight, but also all of the staff and faculty that every day are passionate about their work and strive to be the very best they can be to honor the teaching and learning that goes on here at this campus. So to all of you again, congratulations, and thank Dr. Corb and Dr. Larson for these awards. Any trustees have a comment? Student Senate report, follow that, Mr. Rogers.[625.82][625.82](LAUGHTER).
First you have me follow the volleyball team, and now this. What's the game plan here, guys? Well, hello. In my last report, I told you all that we were working on setting up guidelines, bylaws, for each of our stand-in ad hoc committees through the Rules and Conduct Committee. At this time, there are only two committees remaining. Those are still in draft form, but they will be voted on by the end of the month. On April 14th, the Student Senate approved a request to start a JCCC chapter of the American Association of University Women, and we allocated club funding to the CEO Club. Earlier this month, we also awarded funds to the Model United Nations and the Veterans Club. The Mentoring Program Committee recently gave a presentation to the Student Life Department regarding our progress, as well as seeking input and guidance. Right now, we are hoping to expand the program to involve more than just Student Senate. We want a larger base with other clubs and student organizations to pull our mentors from, and also to reach out and find people who would benefit from having a mentor. On April 11th, the 2014-2015 Student Senate Executive Board was announced. I am pleased to report that the Student Senate President-elect is Jeffrey Redmond. The Vice President-elect is Alicia Chow. The Secretary-elect is Impo Kikana, who is with us today. Please stand, Impo. The Parliamentary-elect is Joshua Powers, and the Treasurer-elect is Ricardo Arsteguet Pulgar. Ricardo, these two gentlemen were able to be here today. Unfortunately, Jeff and Alicia are not able to be here because they are on a trip with Model United Nations. Now, I hope this isn't a spoiler, but some point today, they were supposed to be receiving an award for their delegation. So with that, I want to say, we are very evidently in the home stretch of the semester, and I am glad to know that I have one more report to you all before the semester's up, but it is somewhat bittersweet to know that I have one more report to you all. So, thank you very much for your continued support.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rogers, and congratulations to the new electeds. We certainly appreciate the time you put in as well with all the students and the activities you have on campus to make this campus a better place for students. So thank you very, very much. Any questions by any of the trustees? Thank you.
If I could, could I add something? Excellent choice, I have to say, across all the officers, but also especially so the Treasurer. Ricardo was in my class, he was a...[784.63][784.63](LAUGHTER).
I wonder how that happened?
He was the number-one student, almost had perfect scores on every test. I think the Treasurer's in good hands.[793.82][793.82](LAUGHTER).
Thank you very much, appreciate it, and good luck in your last month. This is the time for our annual Budget Workshop meeting, and I would like to recognize Dr. Larson, who has been here for several days to get this in place. So, Dr. Larson?
Well, I have the easy job, thank you, Dr. Cook. Don Perkins will be taking the Board through this presentation. And as he comes up to the podium, I want to acknowledge Don's leadership in the budget process. I've worked with him for just two months now, and I don't think there's one question regarding college financial matters that I've asked of him that he couldn't answer immediately. So obviously, it's clear that we've all been in very, very good hands. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of everyone here in preparing departmental and division budgets. There's been a great deal of time and thought to get us to this point, to get us to be able to summarize a lot of data for you. And with that, I will turn it over to Don. Thank you.
Don, I think we've got, excuse me, I think we have some AV issues we're going to get straightened out here.
While they're doing that, I would...
We just dropped the number two on the digital college.[868.51][868.51](LAUGHTER). Thank you. Rats, Denise.[873.01][873.01](LAUGHTER). I knew it![876.19][876.19](LAUGHTER).
I'd like to comment that trustee Musa looks much more professional today. I think it's the Jayhawk banner lapel that maybe makes that...
If we're in a lull, I will explain, especially for my K-State friends. A gentleman that has helped keep this college safe and this city safe and this county safe, John Douglas, retired as Chief of Police in Oval Park after 18 years as Chief and 41 years on the force. That's why I was late coming from his retirement reception, and I wear this in honor of John Douglas and no one else.[910.11][910.11](LAUGHTER).
Let me also say, this might be a good time to do that as we try to get the... Are we close? Are we close?
We're close.
I'll save my remarks till later, please.
This is the evening when we cover the Treasurer's, I'm sorry, not the Treasurer's report, the Board's Budget Workshop. This is the evening for the Board's Budget Workshop. And while I will take you through this manual, I know because it is the workshop evening, you were expecting, or we were hoping, to provide heavy hors d'oeuvres as the dinner for this evening, but it got cut.[948.76][948.76](LAUGHTER).
You've never had such a sense of humor before.[957.23][957.23](LAUGHTER).
Class budget.[959.23][959.23](LAUGHTER).
I didn't think that was funny.[964.76][964.76](LAUGHTER).
What I'd like to do is take you through the first part of this book in rather rapid, a rapid pace. So I don't mean to be running through it and zipping past something that you may deem very important to talk about, but we can always come back to it. So on page two of the Board, that the Board has either on your computer or hard copy manual, you can revisit the budget guidelines that were established back in December of this past year. These were reviewed by the Board Management Committee. We had input from the county in regard to the assessed valuation, and the PBS prioritizing the budget strategically process has been used throughout this time. And as we go to page four, you can see the credit hours. I'm just having, on the PowerPoint, it's just the visual, but you can see the details of the credit hours, some history, and that we're projecting zero increase in credit hours for next year. As far as assessed valuation goes, on page five, we have heard that assessed valuation may go as high as 6.9% for next year. We're only projecting, or only using, a 5% rate of increase for our planning purposes. Mill levy and these materials stays the same. In the revenues, we can see that tuition is still about 23% of everything in the general fund or the general slash PTE funds. You see the letters PTE, Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund, as prescribed, as required by Board, by state statutes. Expenses, as shown on page seven, show that there is an increase in the general PTE fund amounts. Last year, it was about $137.7 million, or that's this year, actually. Next year, $140.01 million. Much of that, we'll describe a little bit later, but we'll just, in detail, but it includes about $1.7 million of remodeling and building improvements, one-time type expenditures, that we are, we have added to the budget as a result of getting that 0.5% assessed valuation increase instead of 2%. It gives us the opportunity to make some, to whittle away at our deferred maintenance for our buildings a little bit more, and also to do some remodeling, primarily do something with the first floor of OCB, which has been sitting unused for the past, for all of this year. On the next page, page eight, you have some detail in your hard copy book, or as you may see it online, but this is the, these are three years of cash balances. The up and down is typical. That's how it is every year. You can see it is each year very similar. The year that's in green would be the most current, and that is this year. It's not finished, so the end of that graph shows it as a dotted line. But please take a look at the low point in December. We've always talked about that as being the low point. It's just in a visual way describes how much lower than other points of the year and why.
Excuse me, Don, on that one?
Yes.
If you go back to that chart, please. The trustee policy is at 10%, so if you were to draw the bottom line, as far as that thing could go, it would be, where, about $13 million?
Um, 14?
14 million.
14 million.
And then at the, at the 16% amount that we've been talking about, that puts that bottom line at about where?
14, the 16%, well, let's see, we'll just, 25 million.
Around what?
25, 28 million.
Yeah. So you can see the challenge with that, it's down about as low as it can go, so we cannot use that anymore as far as that reserve.
That's right. In the next couple of pages in your book, you'll see all the new full-time positions that have been added for next year. Of course, it's zero. Now, that doesn't mean there's an activity. There is, there have been a lot of cuts. So what we've been able to take a look at is see the, historically, what the staffing table counts have been. You can see in each of the categories displayed what that, what the variance has been through the years. On the bottom of that page, you can see the nine-year difference. That's interesting, but the one-year difference is very interesting, all the negative numbers there for each of those categories. Jumping over to the subject of average residence tax, we aren't raising the mill, but the assessed valuation is going up. Given the rates that we are considering, we're talking about, about $10 for the average residents in the county. The impact on students, what we've done is we've taken a look at, in the book, you can see, we've taken a look at the University of Kansas, Kansas State Metropolitan Community Colleges, KCK Community College, and we've indicated what their tuition rates are this year. We've shown what it is here this year, and the increase we expect for next year, $3 for in-county, in-state, and $8, I believe, for out-of-state. This particular budget reverses the reserve spending trend. It contains the growth of salary and benefit budgets. We do know that we've, we have 2.5% raises included here, but we have reduced salary and benefits by $3.7 million. We've restored capital budgets to address equipment replacement and building improvements. Now, part of that is that 1.7 million that I described. Another part of it is we have moved $1 million of capital expense out of the Capital Outlay Fund into the General Fund. No increase in spending, we've just decided we need to get that out of the Capital Outlay Fund, but not all at once. We'll do that again in the next year, and again in the next year, until all of the ongoing type expenses, equipment, and items that are every year, is once again reflected in the General Fund. The Capital Outlay Fund then will be in a place where it can be used for one-time projects. It's a short-term fund, anyway. It can be, of course, renewed every five years, but our, the direction we're going is to get back to the point where that Capital Outlay Fund can be used for specific projects with specific dollar amounts. The ongoing expenses for capital will be built up in the General Fund. The decline in total salaries and wages, reduced, again, we'll a little repeat here, reduced by $3.7 million from this year's budget. We budgeted $2.4 million for two-and-a-half percent raises. There's a decline in current operating expenses and an increase in the capital budget that I just described.
Don, could you go back for just a second? How do you want to handle questions here, Mr. Chair?
I'd like, I think, for Don to go through, and then if you could keep your questions. All right, Don, it's up to you.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that, and by the way, we're about done.
Let's let him finish, and then come back.
Just for your information, age of our square footage, and this just lets us know how, how new they are, how old they are, and the fact is, we want to take care of them. We don't want the deferred maintenance costs to build up and become far more expensive in the future. The guidelines for building infrastructure allocations, research from Association of Physical Plant Administrators, 1.5 million to two, 1.5% to 2% of facilities for current replacement value. Johnson County Community College replacement value of all facilities would be 2.271 million. Recommended range, 4 million to 5.4 million annually. We're far under that. The good news is, we've been doing a good job with what we have so far. Our infrastructure improvements built into this budget would add up to 1,440,000. And the office classroom building, OCB, as I mentioned before, the vacated space that's been sitting empty for this past year, we've provided about $1.1 million for that purpose. Now, we're about to the end. Projected reserves. The blue line describes what we had projected in January. The April, the red line describes or shows what we project, where we project reserves to be now. That's based on a 5% increase in assessed valuation. Now, one of those stars up there, those little dots, they're in the form of stars. I just stuck them on there.[1661.01][1661.01](LAUGHTER). The top one, the green one, is where we would be in that last year if we reduced the mill levy by a tenth of a mill. The next one down, the red one, just about at the end of the blue line, is where we would be if we reduced the mill levy by .25 mill. And the one way down on the bottom, almost as low as my voice is these past week, is where the reserves would be if we reduced the mill by a half-mill and let it sit there for the five years. Now, in the rest of the book, you see summary information for all funds on page 16. Behind that, you can see some information specific to the General Fund and the Auxiliary Behind that, the most recent iteration of the projection model. And in that model, we can see in more detail where we would be in cash at December 31st for any of those years, and some other historical information. Behind that, we have a section where we show a lot of detail for all of the organizations of the college, and for a number, all of the unrestricted funds, General Fund slash PTE Fund, Adult Sup Fund, Auxiliary Fund, Student Activities Fund, a couple other minor funds, and by minor, I just mean dollar, minor dollar amounts, and that's the Motorcycle Fund, the Truck Driver School, and the Capital Outlay Fund. So we have a lot of detail here. Some items in this book may pop out to you, some things you'd like to get some more information... Some items in this book may pop out to you, some things you'd like to get some more information about, and we'll be happy to do that if we can, or at least make sure we get that information to you. We are not voting on this budget tonight. This is strictly for information and for discussion, and now I leave that to you.
Don, in that regard, review the timeline with us again.
Sure. In May, at the May board meeting, which is not, not too far in the future, we will vote on the budget, the manager, what we call the management budget. That allows us to do business starting July 1. In the summertime, at the end of June, we'll get some more information. We'll get some numbers that we will use for what we call the legal budget from the county on assessed valuation. We'll be more certain about what we will receive from the state by that time as well. And then in July, in other words, we skip June, no action in June. In July, the board will approve a one-page portion of the legal budget, which will be put in, which will be published and available for the public to see per statutes. That will be a page out of the legal budget, and legal budget has two purposes. Number one is to set the mill levy and also to provide some restrictions for our spending in each of the funds. In August, then, there will be a hearing, public, the public may come and address the board about the legal budget, and the board will vote, then, to approve that budget, or they will vote to do whatever they want, but hopefully to approve it. And then I will file those documents with the state and the county, after which the mill levy will be officially set.
Thank you. Trustee Musil.
Well, could you go back to the projected reserves? The two lines?
The two lines?
Yeah, the graph there. Okay. So at the end of the five-year period, we would be at about 30 million under the projections you assumed, and then we would be at 26 million if we dropped the mill a tenth. I'm just looking at the approximate numbers.
Yes.
You mentioned, you showed a slide that said, recognize a $3.7 million decrease in the salary and benefits line item this year to next year, and you said we'd budgeted 2.4 million to reflect the salary increase, which we have contracted with the faculty and intend to apply to the non-bargaining unit members, too. Remember that? Does that mean that there's a, I'm trying to figure out what the net of that is. Is it $3.7 million reduction after you've budgeted the $2.4 million increase?
Go back to that slide. There's a couple more.
It's, before. All right. So we reduced salaries and benefits by 3.7, and now we're increasing them back 2.4, so the net number is 1.3.
I'm sorry. Is that there?
Yes. The action that was taken basically halted the growth in salaries and benefits.
Right.
Slightly declined a little bit. So that was our objective with that.
Keep in mind, the total effect.
Yeah, but, but keep in mind, we were also targeting 5 million reduction when we threw through our previous budget workshop, and we ended up at the 3.7 for this current year. So I, I guess I'm not following what you're getting at in terms of a net change because the 2.4 million increase is part of the settlement agreement we had for the 14, 15 year.
There is also a small amount of increase in benefits.
I'm just, I was just trying to figure out whether we had a true, without looking at the numbers, a truly a $3.7 million reduction in that line item from FY 14 to FY 15. It's not, that, it won't be that 3.7 million, it will be more closer to 1.3 million.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's my, all I was trying to.
Yeah, it needs to be a net.
Make sure those were.
Total difference. If you want to see the detail of that, by the way, please look on page 21, on the top of the page.
Mine's on this slide, too. So, so the 3.7 was what we've reduced. We're going to add back 2.4 based upon.
Exactly. That's right.
So we are 1.3 million less in expenditures in that area.
We added back, we did have an increase in benefit costs to the tune of about 300,000.
So we're 1 million less. And then there's a decline in current operating expense.
Right. Yes.
So here's my question. We have an assessed value increase. We're, but, we're assuming 5 percent. It's actually going to be 6 percent. 5 percent equals 3.5 million in increased revenues. We are reducing expenses somewhere in the neighborhood of 1 million. So is that 3.5 million dollar increase entirely plus the 1 million reduction expense is going to the capital budget?
The capital line, if you look at that one page there, it shows an increase from around 3 something million, I think the six. So that capital line is what absorbed that increase.
Okay. So that, that's where that's going.
Which, John, by the way, it's just one shot. It's a one-year, it's a one-year deal on that.
Well.
Versus if you'd put that in the, in the above two things, and it's ongoing.
Right. It's, it's a matter of debate whether it's a one-year thing or not, but it's, that would be one-year. Go to the reserve slide. That graph. Sorry, Greg, I took a fast. There. No, the graph.
I have all the same questions. With the star?
Yes. Yeah, with the star.
Told you not to put those on there.
Right there. All right. I can make a graph, I can make this graph look a lot better. So it's a matter of your assumptions.
Absolutely.
You're assuming that in 2018 and 19, that we get to 29 million in reserves if we don't do anything with the mill levy, if we leave it where it's at. We have a 5 percent increase in assessed value this year, but we have 3 percent in the future years. If you put 5 percent increase in each of the future years, that number runs way up.
Yes.
And that bottom star with a reduction in the mill levy goes way up.
Yes.
So I think that we're going to have more revenue in the future than we're forecasting, so we're kind of doing a doom and gloom that we've got to take and spend this money for capital this year because we won't have it next year. Activity I see in the county, we're going to have another nice increase in 2014, probably along the line that we're going to have this, 6 percent, 5 percent. There's a lot of activity. So I don't want the board to be focused that this is the only outcome that we're going to see, because we're assuming 2, 3 percent increase. It may be four, it may be five, it may, it may be more. And maybe a one-time adjustment to increase or restore our capital might be in order. I haven't, I'm not convinced of that yet, but I would do, we do need to know that we've got 4.2 million, 3.5 to 4 million more dollars this year than we had last year just because of the increase in assessed value. No action of our own. Some would call it a windfall. And so that's the number we're working with, and we're reducing expenses, so we've actually got a bigger cushion there. The other assumption in here that I think needs to be corrected, and maybe it has been, but we assume we're going to lose reduction of state aid of 1.5 percent. Is that now, did I understand that the legislature holding us harmless on that and there's not a reduction?
The 1.5 percent will be restored, but until the session's over, we're reluctant to make any.
Right. I'm just pointing this out. This hasn't been pointed out.
Right.
I'm pointing it out. So that's $320,000 additional funding. So we're going to have some extra revenues. I think we need to be cautious what we do because even though I think optimistic about the next couple of years, we could come back to another situation where we, our revenues are doing down, and I want to get to what Bob Drummond defined a few years ago as a very sustainable budget and make sure we don't build a budget that we can't sustain in the future.
Trustee Musil, I'll go back to you, and then trustee Lindstrom.
Just, you saw, showed a slide with the, and I think we saw it in management committee about what this international association recommends for a percentage of your budget that annually should be put into your infrastructure reserve, if you will, 2 to 3 percent, and it was 3 to 4 million for us, 4 to 5, 4 million to 5.4 million. What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, is, does that number reflect our capital budget and our capital outlay budget together? Is that what we should be shooting? Those two together ought to be 4 to 5.4 million?
These items are strictly for building improvement type costs, so it really doesn't make any difference which fund it's coming from. It's not for computers. It's just for tuck pointing, roofs, general building improvements.
I guess what, what I might like.
Regardless of the fund.
Might like to see before May is just a summary that says, here's what, our number ought to be, 4 million to 5.4. If you add up what we're doing that is apples to apples with what this guideline is, where are we?
At 1.4.
1.4 for next year.
Next year. This year, we're at 1.
That was in your slides. I should have caught that.
This year, we're at 1 million. Next year, we're proposing 1.4.
And those, we believe those are apples to apples to that international association guideline?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that, that may require, to me, some more discussion with the recs or something. We may be doing a heck of a job if that guideline's valid. We're at, we're at 25 percent of the guideline. So I, I understand it now. That's all I have.
Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, on the general PTE funds, unencumbered cash graph, the one with the three, the 12, 13, and 14, pull that up just a second.
2.8 million of that. I'm going to ask a question.
It was referenced, Dr. Sobchak referenced the 16 percent level in December, and the fact that that was below that number. If, if now you go back to the projected reserves graph, is that red or blue number?
I'm sorry.
The red or blue number, that is the average for the year? That doesn't take into account the dip in December? Or is that the high point, or average point, or low point for the year?
This is the.
Is that reflected?
Projected reserves at the low point.
At the low point?
Right.
Okay. Could you tell me where, if, if you could put another star there at the 16 percent, where would that be each year?
Excuse me. We could take a look at page 26 in your, in your mat, in your workshop book, and we could see at the top of the page, in that particular column, that the 16.5 percent number is 26 million.
At the end of, in 19, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it would be just about where the star is then?
About where the green star is.
Don, are you, are you finished, trustee Lindstrom?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I guess I would have a question for trustee Stewart. When we look at the assumption of the assessed valuations throughout 19, and we're looking at a projection of 3 percent for each of those years, are you suggesting that we should be changing a projection for one or two of those years?
I think we need to keep in mind when we're seeing a doomsday graph that the assumptions are pretty modest and that maybe, maybe we ought to see the graph, leave that graph the way it is, and then superimpose a graph on there showing what if, what if the rates go up 4 percent, something different. I think those numbers would look dramatically different. And I'm, the minimum kind of bothers me, you know, because we, we have such a fluctuation, and maybe we need to be looking at an average reserve, what's the average reserves over the year number versus the minimum and maximum. Our risk, our risk is that the state doesn't pay us. That's the only risk we have, or that they delay the payment. We're going to get a payment in January, and we're going to get a payment in June when we all write our tax checks for our real estate taxes. So it may be more meaningful to put a, an average number in there than, that's just my thoughts.
Don, on page 57, where you get into some of the detail of the capital expense, and again, we don't need to necessarily discuss it tonight, but you, you list on line 54020 the remodeling and renovations of 1.7. I believe that's, those are the renovations you referred to as space that we haven't been able to utilize as a result of the culinary center moving, and we're going to remodel that area.
Yeah.
You also list on 54050 furniture and equipment of 1.1, which is up considerably over the current year. Is, is all of that due to the new renovations?
First, on page 57 at the top, proposed budget for 2015, the 1.7 includes about 1.1 for the remodeling of the OCB. For our purposes, to keep that number together, 1.7, those are the additional dollars based on the additional monies available through the assessed valuation. That includes about 440,000 for building improvements, actually.
Where's the other 600?
And about 1.1 for OCB, and about 100 for other remodeling, primarily for ADA, safety purposes. And I think we have a restroom that we're going to put in there.
That furniture and equipment, then, at 1.1, is that related to that work primarily? Line 54050?
Which page are you on?
Am I 57 yet? The furniture and equipment line from 103 to 1.1.
Mr. Chair, we have a question. Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. Very good. This, this is, that jump is there primarily because we've moved a million dollars from capital outlay to the general fund. We're not spending a million dollars more, but we will reflect that in the general fund instead of the capital outlay fund.
I see.
Don, we've been doing that to the tune of about 3.2 million a year.
Correct.
Shifting that over. The capital outlay, the use of that capital outlay fund, which I believe you approve every four years, is, we believe should be directed toward major capital projects, one-shot deals, rather than supplementing what we do on an annual basis. So part of the discipline of this budget recommendation is that we get back to where capital used to be. At one time, that capital line used to be in the neighborhood of 13 million. So I don't think it's ever going to get up there again, but we are shooting, I believe, for 10 million after year, after year five.
Roughly, the offset is on the bottom of that same page in the capital outlay grouping, furniture and equipment. You can see it's going down a million.
Yeah.
That's the offset.
Trustee Stewart.
The OCB remodel, what, what are the plans? More classrooms? What is the plan?
We're going to do a trustee lounge. The, actually, we've challenged the academic side to bring us ideas. They bring those to cabinet through our newly established space committee. We keep sending the recommendations back to, and think of some other things. So soon, we think we'll get to where we need to be on that, and whatever it is, it's going to be driven by the needs of the academic side.
And then for recs, a million one for 9,000 square feet is $128 a foot. Is that a reasonable number for a remodel? That seems a little high.
Well, it just depends on what's going to go in there.
Right.
And then you also have to remember, we have some culinary equipment in there that we have to remove, so that drives the cost up.
Seems like it could be a pretty nice trustee lounge.
It's like when you remodel your house, the final product is always more than you thought when you started.
Just so there's no misunderstanding in the public, we are not. Say this again, we are not remodeling a trustee lounge.
We have to vote. We have to vote it.
What trustee lounge? There is no trustee lounge.
Trustee Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To go back to what trustee Stewart was talking about, I, it would be helpful, I think, at least for me, to have kind of a range on the projected reserves from six percent or five and a half, wherever we think it's going to be, versus how we have it there, so we can look at the whole picture, and the public can see the whole picture of that. And then, as an addendum to that, one thing I wonder about, and I just wonder, I don't know if it'll be true or not, is as, as we get into this, this period of time, if it does occur, in which our assessment continues to go up five or six percent a year, I'm a little concerned that we might get back into the routine that we've historically had, and that we become reliant on that, and assume that, and spend that. So, a little concerned about that, that we act with as much discipline as we can to be able to do that. Now, the kind of a reverse of that is, I like the idea of keeping the student tuition down as much as we can, but finding the best balance we can between student tuition versus assessed valuation and the natural flow of all that. I'm not sure what the silver bullet is for that, but I think that's something we ought to consider as we go forward in the years ahead. One of these charts talks about, I think about a twenty-three percent load for the students. I think that's pretty good. I mean, national average is like twenty-five.
Right.
Something like that. So, I think, I think we're doing a good job on that, and I like that.
And trustee Drummond, keep in mind that this budget recommendation over the next five years, and Don, you can correct me if I'm off on this, but calls for a three dollar, an annual increase of three dollars per credit hour. So, we've, we've planned that over the next five years.
And I'd like to see how, what that looks like in terms of that percentage.
Right.
Now, at one time, I think we were like twenty-six percent, or twenty-eight percent, or something like that, and we've slid it down. I, I like the idea of it being there if we can possibly keep it there. And I think another piece of the whole thing is if you look back on page four, maybe, at least on the computer. Page four, well, the enrollment.
Yeah.
And we talked about this before, and I don't want to keep adding this, but if you look at the chart, that could be a very, very alarming chart, in the sense that you see that we're almost back to two thousand five and six enrollment. So, in the past ten years, we've gone up, down, up, and now we're way down again. I very roughly, on my hand calculator, tried to figure out, you know, what is that in dollars? Well, if, I think, depending on what the tuition is a particular year, we're talking between our eight to ten million dollars that we have lost since two thousand and eleven, when we had our height of our enrollment. So, that's about a three million dollar loss per year for the last three years. So, after a period of time, that becomes real money. And so, I think we have to continue with our initiative that has been started, take a really hard look at our enrollment figures, and I understand that it's, it's a different environment today than it was in two thousand four. We've got schools up and down College Boulevard, and we have online courses, and you can take a course anywhere in the world. But where is there a better buy than here? So, I, I think we need to take a very, very serious look, because this is tied, at least in my opinion, very directly into sustainability for us as we go forward. If we look at the proposed budget for next year, we've got a combination of things that make, make us look pretty doggone good. But it's not going to be every year that we cut three point seven million dollars out of the budget. That's probably a one-time thing. So, if you go forward with that, not being able to cut out the kind of money we've cut out the past several years, then we're going to be looking for more and more revenue every year. And part of what I'm trying to say here is, I, I hope we don't become dependent just on tax revenue. If there's opportunities there for student tuition, then I want to try to get that student tuition. I think that just works in a lot of different ways. I don't know what it would be, but it seems to me that if, if you would take fourteen fifty, the projection there, and look at cost per student, the cost per student has probably gone up significantly versus two thousand ten, eleven. And I think that's another barometer we have to be careful about, in terms, how much are we, what's it cost us on a yearly basis to educate a student? And obviously, the lower the enrollment, the more it costs us. And when you have empty classrooms, not empty classrooms, empty seats, that we could fill up some of those seats, then it makes us a lot more efficient, less dependent on, on tax dollars, and able to use the treasures that we have here in terms of our faculty to be able to help our community become more educated. I think maybe that's all I had to say.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with my colleague's assessment in terms of keeping costs down for students. I do also want to ask Mr. Perkins in the administration, on pages nine and ten, where we show that there's no new full-time positions requested, is that because we don't need any new positions?
We've put a cap on, we, we, we have not called for new position requests in light of the situation that we're in there. In light of enrollment, we're doing what we can with what we have.
Do we need new positions?
I think probably across campus, everybody would tell you we need new positions. I think it's a challenge to the institution to do the best they can with the current personnel that they have.
Understood.
Trustee Lindstrom.
Not, not, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. This is my second year now on, on doing the budget, and Don, I commend you. I really appreciate all the information and how it's presented. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Trustee Stewart and trustee Musil.
Yeah, Don, you do a great job, and I grill you pretty hard, but you always have the answers, so.
We're going to miss you. I'll miss grilling. Can you come back next year, just so we can go through a mock budget or something?
Question. We set our assessed value estimate at five percent increase. We passed the budget. We get to October or November, when we get the final assessed valuation number that will be applied to the tax bills, and it's six percent. Our budget is set based upon five percent, so the mill levy that is actually on the tax bill gets reduced by the additional increase in valuation above our assumption? Is that correct?
We'll get a, a number from the county at the end of June. We'll use that to generate our legal budget, set the mill. So, in October, if anything varies from that, in other words, if assessed valuation is slightly greater, they will reduce our mill levy, and vice versa. Is that what you asked?
Well, kind of, but you didn't really answer.
I'm practicing.
If we, if we set our budget that it's five percent.
Yes.
Is what our assumption is, and we pass a budget based upon that, and we get, in July, we get the final number.
Yes.
Whatever that mill levy was, with, at the five percent, will be reduced by the increase in assessed value. We do not get the additional seven hundred.
That will be a decision for the board to make. Fact is, the fact is, we'll find out whether it's five, or if it's seven.
Right.
We'll find that out at the end of June. And then the board will have to decide, okay, do we stick with the mill levy we have?
Okay.
And go forward? Or do we make an adjustment to that because of that extra increase?
So, in effect, the board in July, we could reduce the mill levy by one-tenth, based upon all factors today, if we adopt this budget. And that's certainly the position I'll take then. I just wanted to clarify that.
Or we could do the same.
Yeah, or you, or we could spend the extra seven hundred thousand.
Trustee Musil.
Well, follow-up on that point. When we pass the management budget in May, that's a management budget to allow you to go ahead, as administration, go out and see who wants to come back and work here next year, and those kind of things. When we pass the legal budget in August, with as much information updated as we have from the county appraiser, that will set a mill levy.
Correct.
And that mill levy will apply even if the assessed valuation ends up being slightly higher than that in November, when tax bills go out.
Yeah, subject to some, some adjustment by the county, some minor adjustment.
Right. But they don't, they don't move the mill levy to match our number after we publish our legal budget.
Yes, they do.
Do they?
They do.
They do?
Yes, they do.
So, we have an opportunity in July to set it based on new information, and the county will automatically reset it in November, or October, before bills go out?
Correct.
Is, is this budget workshop information online someplace accessible to folks?
Yes.
So that the public can get to it if they, if they want to go through all this?
Will be.
And I just make the point, every bit of this is based on assumptions.
Correct.
Because it's future, and it's guidelines we told you to use, based on your recommendation to us and our, our direction to staff to use these numbers. And so, just, we can all come up with different assumptions to use, and, and I know you'll run them, but ultimately, to me, it comes down to, are we running assumptions on both the revenue and expense side that are both conservative, and that allow us to have some stability year to year, and we're not going like this one year, reacting to that year's numbers, and the next year doing something completely different? And that's how I'll go into the revisions. I'll look forward to May, and particularly to July, when we have more information, and we'll know if we're at five percent or above five percent.
Any other questions by the trustees? Trustee Drummond.
One more thing, very quickly. I would just commend the administration for all the work that they've done, you know, presenting this, and management committee for their work on it. And particularly, if you turn to page, I think it's five or six, about expenses, the salaries and benefits at seventy-eight percent, I particularly commend you for holding it there, and trying to keep it down, because, as you all know, once you've hit seventy-nine, eighty-one percent, it's like the gauge on your car that begins to move you toward overheating. So, it becomes unsustainable at that period of time, so I commend you for keeping it in that range. That's all. Thank you very much, Mr. Drummond.
Don, any final comments that you have?
No.
I think what I've heard our discussion focus around, and trustee Musil summed up the assumptions pretty well. We, we have given the staff direction on the assumptions to be made over a five-year period, and I applaud the trustees for looking at a five-year projection, always keeping that in front of us. But I think the, I think the issues that all the trustees should be thinking about in the next thirty to sixty days, as we, as we gather more detail, and perhaps for the administration to help us with numbers as well, is the enrollment projections. I think trustee Drummond, you made a good point about that. We'll have a report later in tonight's meeting about some work that's being done on enrollment as a result of our collegial steering discussion. I believe that we should always review that assessed valuation very closely, as trustee Stewart has indicated. A good barometer is that tuition percent of the total revenue. Again, good comments were made about whether that ought to be twenty-five, or twenty-six, or twenty-four percent. I think many of us agree that we want tuition for students to be held in check if we can, and make it affordable for students to come here. I do believe we need to look at staffing needs. We have been on a very conservative approach. You've seen the numbers that we've reduced across the board. And as programs change, meeting the needs of the teaching and learning requirements going forward, I wouldn't eliminate that altogether, but that isn't also a message to say we're going to add staff, but we ought to review those projections. We should be thinking about a reserve balance strategy. What is the right amount of reserve balance? And if we have to look at different assumptions to direct the administration, we should be looking at that, particularly over a five-year sustainability period. I, I like trustee Drummond's approach a few years ago, in agreement with trustee Stewart, that let's, let's not get into a roller coaster ride here of having to make drastic cuts one year and have excess revenues another year. And then, and then, of course, that all leads to the mill levy strategy as well. We ought to be thinking about what that mill levy should be in balance with those other assumptions. So, Dr. Larson and, and Don, I, I just hope that's enough charge for you for one night, but appreciate the work. You all do a great job, and our, our collective interests are to keep the college sustainable, providing the best quality of education we can at a reasonable cost for our students. Thank you very much. That, I think, believe concludes our budget workshop for this evening, and I would like to call Dick Carter to the podium for our college lobbyist report, so we can, we can move to some really motivational, inspirational work. Thanks, Don. Appreciate it. Thanks, Dr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope I look tanned, rested, and relaxed. We've been on spring break for the past couple of weeks at the legislature, and that's afforded us some time to go through the, the various documents, to see just exactly where everything is. It has been a little frustrating, as the primary source that we use for tracking legislation has been very glitchy the past week and a half or so, and so that has resulted in several trips over to the Capitol to speak with revisers and folks in the research department to see just exactly where a piece of legislation is. So, if you have questions at the conclusion of my report about where a particular piece of legislation is, I should be able to tell you for the most part. If something is on the way to the governor's desk for signature, I may not know, because, again, we use that tracking system to, to be able to tell when a, a bill arrived in the governor's office, when he has signed it, and such, and so on. I think I may have used these same words last year when I was speaking to you about this time, that, that we have just experienced yet another historical legislative session. This one had a particular flavor to it that was really an, an all-out front on local governments and local governing bodies. And it's interesting, because in the, in the same breath that, that many who are in Topeka will, will say that they do not want the federal government telling them what to do, and will issue concurrent resolutions and send memos off to Washington, D.C., we will introduce legislation and pass legislation that further curtails your ability as an elected official to, to govern the institution that you've been tabbed by the public to represent. Nevertheless, we did make it through the regular portion of the session, even though there was lots of national spotlight-grabbing headlines related to bills that were introduced, heard, or passed in Kansas this year. We, I, I do have to say, it's very difficult to, it's increasingly difficult to track matters in the legislature, when we are continually faced with ambush hearings, bills that change numbers multiple times in the course of a hearing. In fact, there was one, one hearing this year where a bill number changed three times. And so, if you're trying to follow from the general public, that can be extremely difficult. I would say that in the final days of the regular session, the legislature did work hard to develop a education funding bill that, that would meet the muster of the court, and contained in that were some policy provisions then that caught additional headlines, and I'm not going, going to opine on those, but that has, has been sort of what the, the entire legislative session has been like. And so, that bill now awaits the, the governor's signature, and, and again, it's, it was presented, I believe, last week, so there's fourteen days, ten days that the governor has to sign a bill, or allow it to become law, and that's what we're waiting on right now. One, one interesting piece of, of news that occurred, the very last thing that occurred before the Senate adjourned, was the confirmation of Senator Pat Apple from Lewisburg. The governor appointed him earlier in March to sit on the Kansas Corporation Commission. That, that confirmation occurred on the final day that the, the legislature met, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the frontrunner for filling that seat is one of JCC's own, and that's Molly Baumgartner. That central committee election will occur on Monday, the twenty-first. So, so this coming Monday, folks will be paying attention to what's going on down in, in that particular Senate district. Legislators will, for the most part, come back on April thirtieth. That signals the beginning of the veto session. The rumors that we're hearing now from leadership and from different folks that are, that are close to the process is that it will be brief. Typically, the veto session can be long and drawn out, and extend beyond the, the regular deadlines that have been established by the, by the legislative calendars. We sort of did that at the end of the regular session. We were supposed to end on Friday, was it the first, Friday, the, whatever that, the first Friday of, of April is, how quickly we lose dates when we're so close to the process. We did not finish until late Sunday night, and, and so, the legislature extended its regular session a couple of days. We do have on the calendar the ability to go through till about May fifteenth during the veto session, but I think that legislators, especially House members and incumbent House members, are anxious to get out on the campaign trail. This is an election year for them, and so, there's, there's little desire to extend the session any more than, than necessary. The consensus revenue estimating memo that sort of gives us a financial forecast The consensus revenue estimating memo that sort of gives us a financial forecast for where the state is going will likely be released, or in fact, it's probably being released right now. There may be social media updates about it going out right now. I, I saw one just before I stood up to speak that it was anticipated that it would be released around 5:00. I'm anticipating, although we've had no heads up about what the, the financial forecast looks like, like any report or any, any document related to legislature, you can, you can massage it and, and help it to say what you want it to say. I do anticipate that it will paint a rather rosy picture for the next at least year or so for revenues coming into the state. But, but again, I'll have a more thorough analysis once, once we're able to actually review the, the document that the economists have, have discussed and come up with. Let me speak specifically about a few legislative items. I'm not going to go through in detail in the report that I presented to you. It is a little bit longer than normal, but I do want to touch on a few high points, specifically as it relates to higher education. As you're aware, there were three pilot projects that the legislature, or at least the Senate, introduced related to higher education, almost all of them related to community colleges or technical colleges. In the final analysis, and, and one of those was specifically related to Johnson County Community College, and that was the Go Pro Now program. That program was excluded in the final negotiations as was a program that was called the Success Act. It would have created some partnerships with community colleges and, and state institutions, but it also was a pathway for a discussion to begin on statewide mill levy, and that was a, a large concern, at least to this body. And that bill, both of those bills were, were not in the final product that was advanced to, to the governor for a signature. They are contained all together, K-12 and higher education in the same bill. There was a bill in, a, a component in there that established an ongoing pilot project for GED students, and we were expressly written out of that, that bill when it was introduced. That bill remains the same and is part of the larger package. You can make guesses as to why that might be. I, I cannot give you the accurate answer. We, we will continue to have some conversations. I know that Dr. Sobchak is very involved, at least at the, at the association level, with that particular part of the discussion. I will say that the good news is, is that the 1.5% cut that was given to the college for fiscal year 2015, that's the current budget year that we'll be talking about or that, that was just approved, was restored. That's about $2.1 million for the two-year institutions. The other good news is that the second year of funding for Senate Bill 155, or about $12 million, was also appropriated. And again, that, that's a program that we've seen some success from as well through the high school kids that participate in some of the CTE programs. The, and, and so that, that's about where it stops for the good news as far as finances for higher education is concerned. I, I won't go into detail about the rest of the system, but, but those are definitely good notes to end on for the community college sector. I will talk briefly about the amendments to the gun bills that were passed, and I, I did follow up with the, the senior reviser who serves the committee that, where that bill is heard, and nothing has changed from, from the time that I reported to you back in February when the bill had its initial hearing. The bill did get stopped up in the, in the House for some reason, and within the last week or so of the, the regular legislative session, the Senate introduced a new bill, passed that bill out of committee, passed it across the, their floor, and it was included in a conference committee report that was ultimately adopted. The, the question that I've been asked, and hopefully I can put to, to rest any concerns that you may have, is that the four-year exemption that the college applied for through the Attorney General's Office will stand through that, the rest of that period, and so we're roughly three and a half years out, three years out with, with that provision in place. It does create some challenges for the college as it relates to employees and, and their ability to conceal carry in the workplace. Some of the other things after that four-year period is, is up. The, the other item of, of concern is, and, and we testified to this when the, the bill had its hearing in the House, is that we have students that fall under, under two categories, and we have student policies and we have employee policies, and we have some students who are here on work programs and, and work for the college while they're going to school. And so there is a question as to how those particular individuals will be treated with respect to the new, with the new law. That was a question that was presented to the, to the committee. It was not answered. It wasn't necessarily intended that it would be answered the day that we presented it, but that is something that I will continue to follow up with legislative staff on. The, the governor has signed a, a bill that directly speaks to the conversation that you just had with Mr. Perkins, and that is the Property Tax Transparency Bill. That's a bill that had been floating around in the legislature for the past couple of years, and essentially what that bill will do is require, and I believe it's a current practice that, that this board already observes, but it would require the board to take a public vote of the board on any increase in property values for the mill levy. And so you, you saw some budget projections this evening in your, in your discussions. If you choose then to retain the money that is part of that property value increase, you'll vote and then publish that vote in the, in the local paper of record. That bill passed and it would exempt, I would, I would mention that it exempt any previous taxes that had been approved by voters, whether they're special levies or whether they're part of the statutory 21.5 mills related to public education. The, another interesting bill, and, and this is the only one that has passed so far that, that would likely be of interest to you, because we did spend a lot of time tracking local elections bills. The, the one that, that passed was a party change affiliation bill. It just sets time parameters for folks who, who might change their political affiliation to vote for someone in a primary. It establishes timelines for when they can change back. The governor did sign that, that bill. I'll talk about the other election bills momentarily. The, the other important thing, and, and I won't go into details again as we talk about taxation issues, but again, it plays, it comes into play again when you start talking about your budget workshops and, and how you allot for future years and how you plan for budgets for future years. Some of these major issues are still up in the air. I don't know if we'll see movement on them or not. Again, I mentioned that we're hearing that there will be a brief veto session. We are hearing that there would likely be one tax bill, one budget bill and one judiciary bill, and that everything else likely will, will not be worked or discussed. It may be discussed, but, but likely not worked in this brief veto session. And so one of those things that could come into play are things like the machinery and equipment tax issue. That, that issue has boiled down now simply to, I say simply, compared to what it was, it, it seems rather simple, but codifying in statute the property valuation guide that is already out there in a, in a publication of the Department of Revenue creates a, a three-level test on how you can determine whether something is personal or, or real property. That gained some traction as the session rolled on and is part of the bill that has passed, both the House and the Senate in different forms and is a part of a conference committee discussion. Interestingly, the, a bill that was attached to that is a bill that speaks to property tax exemptions for private health clubs. When you're in a community the size of ours, those are major square footage buildings. There are some that are part of TIF or CID districts. It's, the, the number can go into the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a county like Johnson County. And so that's something that we'll continue to, to monitor. It's a very controversial issue. It, it wouldn't seem like it is, but it is, and we'll continue to monitor that. The other one that is still out there, and, and I know that there's a full court press and, and some additional folks have been hired to help push them across the finish line, and I don't know if it will occur or not, is the mortgage registration fee issue. Again, that's a $16 to $17 million issue as it relates to Johnson County budgets at the government, at the county level. Again, how that impacts us down the line is yet to be seen. That issue is still part of the, the conference committee discussion. And then the final one, again, I don't think this one will have as much of an impact as, as it initially, as we were concerned that it might, and that's the change from the Court of Tax Appeals to the Board of Tax Appeals. There are clear, clearly some issues there that need to be dealt with, but the change that, that I would continue to watch is the one where if, if the board rules on a property tax value, that value cannot be changed for three years. And that, that would be if the, if the board rules in favor of the property tax, the property taxpayer or the property owner. That's something that we'll continue to, to watch and see if that plays out in the, in the end. So all of those items are potentially ripe for discussion in a, in a conference committee report as it relates to taxes. Onto the good stuff, the local election issues. The, the one bill that made its way through the process was the Public Reporting Bill. That's a bill that would require entities like the college or, or other public funded entities that have representation in Topeka to file with the Secretary of State's office the amount of the compensation of, of a contract if the employee is contracted for or if the employee is an actual employee of the, the entity. That bill is, in a current report that is an agree to disagree, which means there's a several-step process that you go through to, to ultimately get that bill to become law. I'm not sure that the time exists or if they'll take that up when they return. Likewise, I'm not sure that they will address the local elections issue. Both bodies, both House and, both the House and Senate have worked bills in their committee. They have passed bills out that sit on general orders in those respective bodies. We will not be working any more general orders, although nothing ever dies in Topeka. You can suspend the rules, you can bring something above the line and discuss it. Again, it's a procedural process that's somewhat difficult, but still is possible. The House bill would move local elections to the fall and keep them nonpartisan. It's as simple as that. The Senate bill contains a few other provisions that I've discussed before. They've not changed. There would be special, specific exemptions, rather, for community colleges, county governments and water districts. We expect that provision to come out if a conference committee action were to take place. The other provision that's contained in there that, that's equally concerning to groups and bodies like yours, and that's the vacancy fill-in process where if, if a vacancy were to be created by the board, there would be a dual precinct committee process that is still, that would, that would come together for the central committee election. That is how vacancies would be dealt with on, on local governing bodies. It create, there's still a lot of questions to be answered. It's, it's very complicated and I'm not sure that it ultimately works in the end, but that's, that's where those particular pieces are right now. Again, I'm, I'm not thinking that those issues will, will probably come up during the veto session, or at least in a sense where they'll be passed. But again, it's the legislature. Anything can happen. I think I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. I did bring some parting gifts with me for a select few of, of the trustees. The pictures with Senator Roberts arrived last week. I know that was several months ago that we, that we went out to DC, but for the, those of you that traveled with us on, on that trip, I have those with me and I can wait to distribute those at the end of the meeting, or if you'd like, I'd be pleased to read the inscriptions and distribute them accordingly.
We'll, we'll not do that, Mr. Carter, but I have a question on House Bill 2141, the local elections. Am I clear that it would exempt community colleges from the precinct process?
Not from the precinct process. It would exempt them from the fall, the fall election. And that particular piece became very contentious in that it creates a new set of elections or it would continue the current spring elections. It would create a new set of elections in the fall and it would have a price tag that is fairly significant, and that, that provision will likely come out in any, in any discussion if, if the bills continue to be discussed. So those, those exemptions for water districts, chartered county governments and community colleges will, will go away and they would be moved to the fall ultimately. It would be the, the intent.
So it's your understanding that vacancies on the community college would be handled through the precinct process and become partisan?
In the version of the bill that is currently on the Senate floor, yes. It does not address issues if you have an unaffiliated office holder or an independent or a libertarian office holder. It would, they would be filled by the Republican, the Republican Precinct Committee men and women and the Democrat Committee Precinct men and women that would come together for one large central election.
Any questions of Dr. Carter? Trustee Stewart, then Trustee Musil.
Yeah, on House Bill 2473 or Senate Bill 447, gun issue, I assume the governor's probably going to sign that, or has he?
He's not signed it yet. It's, it's been enrolled and presented to him, engrossed and presented to him, I should say.
When would it go into effect, upon his signature or July 1st?
I believe July 1st is the, is the enactment date.
Tonya, are you studying that? Can you, that affects us pretty significantly, and I think we need to have a report to the committees on, and maybe executive, whatever, committee level. Because if we can't, I think there's two issues actually. The, there's something that happened to open carry, and we need to look into that because we may not prevent, be able to prevent people from walking around with an open carry gun on campus.
I believe you can post a prohibition of open carry, but you cannot prevent concealed carry.
So I, I think we need to make sure we understand that completely, and if, so we can tell our students you can't carry on campus, but we won't be able to tell our employees. And it's also my understanding that that preempted our four-year opt-out, that that would be effective immediately, and I think we need to clarify that too, because it may be July 1st, an employee could be, as long as they carried, had a concealed carry license could carry a gun on campus. So I think we need to clarify and make sure we have a good report to the committee, because I don't know what we can do about it, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll pass along the, the statute that the reviser gave to me. He said that they did create special language that, that protected any of the institutions that filed for the four-year exemption, so.
That's good.
But I will pass that along to, to Ms. Wilson.
Trustee Musil and Trustee Sharp.
Yeah, I'm confused now. Special language, we have opted for the four-year exemption, but as I understood this legislation, it said that employees of public governmental entities who had a concealed carry permit could carry their gun to work, period. Are you saying that you think that the language include, the bill includes the language that says community colleges? That's not true?
The, the, the four-year exemption that we applied for as a campus will continue to hold. I think maybe we will need to go back and look at the employee piece of that.
Okay, because my understanding, that was the entire purpose of it, was that employees of governmental entities could carry concealed at their jobs, and that's what is concerning because we have 2,000 employees, temporary and full-time.
Correct.
Any of whom could get a concealed carry by going through the eight-hour course and could carry weapons on here, and the administration would have no control over whether or not they are carrying a concealed weapon in the classroom, in the counselor's office or wherever.
You would not be allowed to ask if, if a person is a concealed carry holder.
Trustee Sharp. Or are you finished?
I was not.
Please proceed. Please proceed.
I think we need to explain to the public that the effort at a statewide mill levy for community colleges is very similar to what happened in 1992 with the K-12 funding where we adopted a statewide mill levy where all the money from the state goes to Topeka and then they dole it out. And that has not worked very well for Johnson County. And, and I am not against, you know, sharing our largess and our wealth with other parts of Kansas, having grown up in another part of Kansas. But if we do that for community colleges, that means the, the Topeka Legislature will collect money from Johnson County and dole it out to 18 other community colleges, and if we see what happened in some of the bills today, they will exempt us from the ability to, to maybe get some of that or get our share. So that's an important issue for Johnson Countyans. I, I would like you to do a summary when the legislature's done and all the bills have been signed about those bills, which as you described it, were an affront to local control, where the legislature in Topeka imposed a mandate or took power away or placed restrictions on local government, whether it's cities or counties or the community college, because I think we need to, we need to understand that for the people in Johnson County, understand what their legislators are doing. You said nothing ever dies in Topeka, and I, I'm not sure that common sense hasn't, but I, I don't ever have a question for you. The, the folks that are in charge up there went up and said they're going to do transparent government and accountable government, and they supported local control. And you say there are ambush hearings, there are bills that numbers change on, there are bills that are never seen until they're passed out of committee. That's not transparent government, it's not accountable government, and they've done nothing since in the last two years but take control away from local government.
That certainly is not the regular course of action, but it is a growing trend and, and you should be concerned.
I'm done now.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add real quick, I checked on Twitter and the consensus revenue estimate shows that the state is about 6% down from this time in 2013 in revenues, and that's all I've seen so far. There's, nobody reported anything on the expectations moving forward, just 6% down.
There will be two versions. There will be an, an executive summary and then there will be a longer memo, and I will be pleased to forward the executive summary once, once we're able to get it to Terry and, and we can get it out to, to the. can get it out to the trustee board.
And then, secondly, I would just say, I think that trustee Musil's idea about a report of all of the bills attacking local government is a good one. I don't think there's enough time in Mr. Carter's day. I keep track of legislation for a number of clients, and every bill I read in the most obscure committee bill that you wouldn't think had to do anything with local government, and in every bill, there is a reach-down to take away local control from some entity. It's a water board, it's a sewer board, it's community college boards of trustees. It has been absolutely frightening this year to see, to see that so pervasively and obviously. So I do like that idea. I don't know where you start or where you end.
Trustee Stewart.
Just thinking about the gun bill and having you come to the committee, but looking around the room, everybody in this room, except for the trustees, would be able to carry a weapon. That kind of puts us at a little disadvantage. So you may want to look at, through Judy, to see if we can designate ourselves as employees, even though we don't get paid, so that everybody's questioning, so.
Other questions or comments of Mr. Carter? Trustee Drummond.
Just response to trustee Stewart. I'm saying we'd have to count on these guys.
I'd rather count on this guy over there.
Other comments or questions?
I thought that was pretty informative.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Appreciate it.
I never thought about that.
Thank you, sir. On a positive note, on a positive note, I would like to recognize the fact that the infamous GoPro Now effort was really the first time that I can ever recall that our delegation came together to promote something that directly benefit this college. And I think that's something that needs to be noted. And so I just wanted to make that point.
It's a good one. Okay, committee reports and recommendations, management, trustee Stewart.
Okay, I'll, one added comment is, it's also, I guess it's good that I looked around the room, and Counselor Ferguson wouldn't be able to carry either, he's not an employee, so he'd be with us. The management committee met on Wednesday, April 2nd, and we had a number of items we went through. We only have one recommendation, but the staff represented a number of reports, beginning with Patrick Rosul Allison on the status of the college's strategic planning process. It was quite informative. Other reports, initiatives on addressing the declining enrollment, and report on college ratio, financial ratios in comparison to peers. Don gave us a budget update, and we heard from Denise Moore on information services and security, always a high priority, and with all the, certainly in the news about all the hacking attempts and all that, it's something that we have to be very vigilant with. But I think that the staff here is doing a very good job. You probably can never say you never, it will never happen, but I believe that they are very proactive in staying, trying to stay ahead of that. Rex Hayes updated us on several capital projects, and I think things are going well there. We do have one recommendation, and it's, we issued, the college issued a request for proposal for its annual Microsoft Enrollment for Education License Agreement. And it allows us to, all the college computers and servers to have the latest versions of the Microsoft applications for a period of one year, from April 1st to March 31st, 2015. And we, it has four additional year increments that can be renewed. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low proposal of $163,763.65 from Gov Connection, Inc. for the establishment of an annual agreement for Microsoft Enrollment for Education solution. I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That concluded the management committee. I have one add-on announcement that I want to make, and it's a commercial for the Coen Community Series, which is coming up on May 3rd at Yardley Hall. Country music star Tracy Lawrence will be here, and it is an event that 100% of the proceeds from the ticket sales go to scholarship and programs here at the college. So it's a really neat thing to do, and those of you in country music will enjoy that. So there are tickets available, they've sold pretty well so far, but mark your calendars for May 3rd, Saturday night. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. Learning quality, trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, learning quality committee meeting minutes are on page 2143 of your electronic board packet. As you will note, the meeting was held on April 4th, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. The meeting was directed by Dr. Andy Anderson. There were four presentations, and the learning quality committee will be asking for the Board of Trustees to take action on one recommendation. The first presentation was Steve Hansen, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee. He presented curriculum that was approved by the Educational Affairs March 26 meeting. He explained the various modifications, additions, deactivations that were due to K-BOR requirements, course alignments, response to accrediting agencies, response to students, and local need. It was noted that the solar technology degree program and energy courses have been deactivated due to lack of student enrollment and interest. It was, those courses, those courses and the concepts will be folded into existing degreed HVAC and electronics programs to give students the opportunity to complete their degree. It was explained that the curriculum approval process can be lengthy, and one that begins with the department approval, the division curriculum committee approval, the division dean approval, and then on to review and approvals from the Educational Affairs Committee, the learning quality committee, the Board of Trustees, and then finally, Kansas Board of Regents. This process may take up to six to 12 months to complete. And as part of that presentation, Bobian Kalkofin, and she's Chair of Interior Design, she's a professor there, and Darla Green, Interior Design Associate Professor, presented their experience in the department's curriculum changes that were the culmination of a one-and-one-half-year to two-year process. They mentioned that all three design programs were to be modified, nine new courses would be added, 17 were deactivated, and 12 courses were modified. Professors Kalkofin and Green explained the changes were a result of input from student exit interviews, input from the 24 advisory board members, examining trends, considering faculty strengths, determining what the students needed to be successful in the field, and finally, community needs. The third presentation, Vince Miller, Director of Education Technology Center, spoke about the migration from the old IT management system, Angel, to the new system, Desire to Learn, or D2L, at the end of May. Training opportunities are being offered by faculty, to faculty and staff to learn the new management system. He noted that there are 2,675 total credit in face-to-face courses with 300,000 visits per month on Angel. He also added that D2L provided a better experience for those using their phone, and that instructors can see at a glance how many students have looked at the course materials. Vince added that Johnson County Community College is hosting the Summer Institute on Distance Learning and Instructional Technology Conference to be held July 31st through August 1st. Around 400 are expected to attend this yearly professional development conference, which will feature presentations, discussions, groups, hands-on workshops, and demonstrations. Keynote speaker will be Dr. Richard Kulata, Director of Educational Technology for United States Department of Education. And the fourth presentation was Rick Noring, Dean of Learning Engagement. He briefly reviewed the recommendations regarding the proposed amendments to key policy statements in Sections 311, 312, 313, 314, 315, and 316, which all relate to the student registration, records assessment, tuition, financial aid, and general academic policies. Those policy amendments can be found on pages 23 to 42 in the electronic board packet. This is part of a larger review, as I mentioned last month, of all college policies directly affecting students are being conducted for the purpose of improving key performance indicators of student satisfactions. The recommendation, recommended changes generally serve to improve clarity, readability, organization, and user-friendliness of student policies. As a result, it is the recommendation of the learning quality committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations of the college administration to approve the deletions, transfers, and amendments to the following board sections. Section 311, registration assessment records. Section 312, tuition and fees, refunds, return checks. Section 313, financial aid. Section 314, academic policies. Section 315, degree certificates requirements. And Section 316, transcripts as shown subsequently in the board packet. I would make that recommendation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Trustee Lindstrom, anything else?
I would welcome any comments from anyone else who was in attendance to that meeting. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Questions of trustee Lindstrom. Thank you. Human Resources, trustee Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Our committee met on Monday, April 7th at 9:30, and trustee Sharp and myself were there to represent the board. We have two recommendations for you. I'll kind of give you a briefing on the first one. The first item on the agenda was a discussion of a 2.5% increase for all non-bargaining unit employees. Increase for the bargaining unit employees, unit members of 2.5% for fiscal year 15 was approved in the current master agreement. We had discussion surrounding the appropriate time to grant increases to non-bargaining unit probationary staff, as well as the plan to incorporate merit increases into the compensation system in fiscal year 2016. The human resources staff will bring a documented overview of the continuing rollout process of the new performance appraisal system, and the procedure for granting increases once a newly hired employee has successfully completed his or her probationary period for discussion at our May meeting of this year. With that being said, the recommendation we have for you this evening is recommended by the college administration, the HR committee, that the Board of Trustees authorize salary adjustments equivalent to 2.5% increase for all non-provisionary, non-bargaining unit salaried and full-time and part-time hourly employees employed as of June 30th, 2014, to be effective July 1st, 2014, and I would so move that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The second item, I'll make a recommendation in a second, but to give you a briefing on it, was a recommendation regarding a proposed amendment to the master agreement. The members of the Faculty Association have worked together with their constituents, administration, to identify and clarify discipline areas and how they should be treated under the master agreement, specifically with respect to the master agreement. The amendment requires ratification by the bargaining unit and the Board of Trustees. The proposed amendment does not have a fiscal impact or make significant changes to the provisions of the agreement. It does contain the following key items and provisions. Article 2, recognition. Section 3 amended to define the term counselor as a counselor, career counselor, or access services advisor. Article 8, reduction in force amended to, and restated to, say, incorporate a new addendum 2, which defines a discipline area and sets forth the discipline areas to be considered should a reduction in force become necessary. Part B, clarify that in no instant under Article 8 would the administration be required to create a new position or to place a bargaining unit member into a position for which he or she cannot meet posted job requirements. Part C defined probationary solely for the purpose of Article 8 of the master agreement. Part D, provide for the agreement upon the notification of the Faculty Association president prior to the implementation of a reduction in force. Part E, update the recall provisions in the context of discipline areas. And Part F, address the non-material amendments to correct, clean up existing language. And for the sake of further discussion, I would make this recommendation. It is a recommendation of HR committee and the college administration that the Board of Trustees accept the recommended amendments to the master agreement, and I would so move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Trustee Stewart.
Yeah, just a question on D. Provide for an agreed-upon notification. What are the details of an agreed-upon?
I presume this is the type of thing where we sit down and talk to the Faculty Association president about what's happening, something that we would do and have done, I believe, this past year.
But it's not saying that you have to give six months' notice before reduction. I mean, what is, are there devil in the details? Does it give you the ability to obviously sit down and say, "We've made the decision to do a reduction in force"? I wanted you to understand this before we make the announcement, or?
I think the key word, and Tanya might give us some elaboration, but I believe the key word there is notification.
It reads, "In the event that a reduction in force becomes necessary, the president or his or her designated shall consult with the Faculty Association president."
That's all.
There's a follow-up sentence, there's no timing issue, but the president will present reasons for considering a reduction in force and shall provide relevant information. The Faculty Association president will be given an opportunity to discuss that reduction in force. So it's a notification and discussion.
Okay, that's reasonable. That's reasonable.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. One point here, a third agenda item, was an update of the Affordable Care Act. Recent government guidelines have provided a safe harbor approach to determining adjunct faculty members' credited hours of service per week. The guideline allows for a credit of 2.25 hours of service per week for every hour teaching or classroom time. Given our current load guidelines for adjunct faculty, the majority of adjunct faculty members have a workload of less than 30 hours per week. The ACA requires implementation in the first benefit plan year beginning in 2015, which only impacts the month of June of this projected budget in 2015. Based on the current cost of our medical plan and industry trend data, the estimated cost would be approximately $20,000. However, if every eligible part-time hourly employee opted for the benefit, the cost would be approximately $125,000. An analysis is currently underway to determine budget estimates for fiscal year 2016. Undoubtedly, we will bring that to you when we have that available. So that's just an update of the ACA and the ongoing impact of that legislation to us.
Trustee Stewart.
So the estimate is $20,000 for a year?
No, one month.
For one month.
Because it says the fiscal year 15 will be approximately $20,000.
Right.
$2,000 per month, it should say.
Well, it would be $20,000 per month, but in 15, it goes into effect in January of 15, so we have to implement it in our first benefit year. So the first benefit year is June 1, and so in our fiscal year 15, we only have one month that would actually be impacted. But then after that...
On the low end, it's $240,000 a year additional. On the high end, it's a million?
1.5.
1.5 million. Wow.
The, the estimate that we're using, that $20,000 a month number comes from industry trend, which is that approximately 10 to 15% of your eligible employees will take advantage of the benefit. Obviously, that, so the 1.5 million is if every currently eligible employee took, which that's probably not going to happen, but we also have, there's still a lot of gray area here with, right now, it doesn't appear that our adjunct faculty, the way we currently set our workload guidelines, would qualify for the benefit. So that doesn't, we don't appear to have to count that number at this point. Those things can change.
Well, so the range is 240,000 a year to a million?
Right.
Five, which both are significant.
They are.
That's the restoration of the state aid.
Trustee Cross.
What's the highest it's ever been? If that number was said, I didn't catch it. In terms of the most we've spent on... In terms of the most we've spent on, the numbers are just discussing 20,000.
Yeah, we haven't, this is, this is a new, a new thing with the Affordable Care Act, so this is not something that the college has...
This is new money.
Right.
Yeah, it was zero.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Other comments? Thank you, trustee Drummond. Anything else?
That should cover my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is Collegial Steering, Collegial Steering Committee did meet on May 5th. That is, that is, that is... I made T act notes for Collegial Steering. Isn't that interesting? Collegial Steering did meet April 8th, I'm sorry, and we had faculty senate representation, faculty association representation, administration, and Mr. Trustee Musil, myself. We had a very aggressive agenda. It seems like those hours go very, very quickly, and we had a lot of engagement. We discussed learning management system. We had a website utilization update on progress we're making there from previous discussion. Talked a little bit about the physical education requirement that's being discussed, reading readiness provision that we had some interest in at the beginning of the school year, and enrollment strategies, and also the discipline issue. Spent a lot of time on the enrollment strategies. Dr. Korbe, I think, gave a nice report of, we have, and that was of interest in our last board meeting or a couple of meetings back, and I think Dr. Williams had made the comment as well, that Faculty Association certainly was interested in enrollment strategies. There's a committee of 25 people working on that right now, comprised of faculty, counselors, student affairs, and support areas. They're really focusing on three areas on enrollment. The academic experience itself, enrollment strategies, and marketing communications. So they've kind of broken up into those three subgroups. Lot of interest. Some of the things they're discussing is the possibility of block scheduling, which would be about four classes together on two nights a week. They're talking a little bit about how online courses are affecting our enrollment. Trustee Drummond, as you said earlier, really looking at restructuring recruiting strategies. As we, as we look around benchmark colleges, we're finding that we certainly don't have the number of recruiters that some colleges have of our size, and that may be another issue that we need to, need to address. But it was very encouraging that everybody has a stake in the game, and with that participation, we're really encouraged. Judy, I don't know if you have anything else to say to that point, but I really appreciated that report and the interaction we had on that topic. Is there anything else you'd like to say about enrollment strategies?
No, just that we are, the one thing that is really significant to me is that we're working across all different sections of, or all different areas of campus to try to bring together the strategies that we need to do to increase enrollment. And so there's just been a really strong recognition of the fact that it's not just one area of campus that is responsible for that, but we all have a part in it. And I think one of the most significant things is just the partnership that the faculty have entered into with student services and with the counselors to try to make sure that we are more proactively contacting students and getting information to students that they request. So it's, it's really been kind of exciting, and it's, we're excited to see what kind of results happen in the fall.
In some cases, and I think Mr. Rogers has left, but in some cases, students are targeting students to call for potential enrollment. As Dr. Korbe indicated, faculty are targeting certain students from their program and to recruit others, so it was really encouraging. Trustee Musil, I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that.
Well, I, I have a couple thank yous here, I think, to the faculty. Thanks, Deb, and your team on the master agreement amendment, because I know how hard you worked on it. I've heard it from your colleagues. I know the rest of the, rest of the leadership of the association did as well. And really thanks to all the faculty for the work on the student enrollment, because we hear a lot about how government, or how governmental entities ought to function like a business, and I've always thought that was funny, because I don't think it really works that way. But we can be more convenient to the people we serve, we can be more customer-friendly, and we can realize we're all in it together. And that's what I saw, is that, that task force moved quickly to get some things done that really are based on common sense and making it easier for the students and reaching out to the students and the faculties in that. And I have just let everybody know, semi-volunteered the board, because I think if there are people out there that are going to be calling students who didn't complete their online application and we don't know why, or who didn't end up enrolling, that we ought to be part of the effort to be recruiters and ambassadors as well. And so I'm certainly willing to do that. I hope the rest of the board is, if there's an opportunity for us to be active participants in this effort instead of just recipients of information. So Collegial Steering goes very fast. That hours goes a lot faster and is a lot more enjoyable than this.
The other item that we just spent considerable time on was the learning management system, which our faculty uses, and we're using the famous Angel system, which will come to an end here soon. But the discussion is kind of fun, because it's just like some of us thought that laptops probably would never stay. We have some that feel that Angel will never go away, and yet that reality is coming. So we had a lot of discussion in the transition about the learning management system and moving into the new one, and even Dr. Sobchak learned some things about how to apply it for his own class, so I thought you were very transparent about that. So good discussion, and I just really am pleased at the interaction that we're having at Collegial Steering on these very important issues and, and the work that's being done already in committee on a lot of the topics. Any questions about that? President's Recommendations for Action, Treasurer's Report, trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to present the Treasurer's Report for the month ending February 28th, 2014, which can be found on pages 54 through 64. Briefly, here are a few highlights. Ad valorem tax distributions of 2.4, 2 million were received in March and will be reflected in next month's report. On page 63, at the bottom of the page, please note the cash balances. At February 28th, we had a book balance of 92.3 million with 17.6 million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of $74.7 million. Expenditures generally are in, in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration to the Board of Trustees, approved Treasurer's Report for the month ending February 28th, 2014, subject to audit, and I would make that recommendation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for the Treasurer's Report? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that ends my report.
Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Cook. There are four different clinical affiliate agreements in this packet. I would like to recommend to the board that I do them all at one time. Any objection to that?
Any objection by anyone? Let's proceed.
It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into agreements with the agencies featured on pages 65 through 82 of the Board Packet for the clinical experiences indicated for the periods as listed in their respective recommendations.
Do we have a motion?
I'd so move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? Trustee Stewart.
Yeah, the internship with Leavenworth, the Bureau of Prisons, what does that entail? Break your head into them. What area, what, does anyone answer that?
I don't really know. I think trustee, so we might have to get back to you on that one. I will, I'm sorry. Just administration of justice.
Probably, but...
You know, we've been, we've been talking about putting these in the consent agenda because we've never had a question on any of the clinical.
Keep you on your toes.
I don't have a question.
We'll get that information back to you.
Okay. If anybody wants to look at this list, it's an impressive list of the variety of programs where we send students out to work in the quote "real world" and with these partnerships, and this is one time we do a bunch of them at once. A lot of times we'll have one or two of, meaning this is an impressive list of how our students are out there not only learning about the real world but contributing, and I just congratulate everybody that has a hand in that to give those students that experience.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. The monthly report to the board. Before you have a packet here that itemizes numerous accomplishments and feats that our faculty and staff have performed over the past year, but in keeping with our newfound tradition, I'd like to, like to introduce him to a lightning round and start with Dr. Korbe. Judy.
I have just three little things to, well, they're not little, but to highlight to you, and they're out of continuing education again, a couple of contracts that they have just signed that are really representative of the work that's going on there. One is with Burlington Northern, and it is a, an agreement to train 160 people in CDL training, and so it's a fairly large contract, and so it was really good. We just got that signed. And then they've just signed a contract with a biomanufacturing company, 10 courses in which we'll be doing some training and be able to use our biotech lab facilities that we have here on campus. So that's another one that just got signed. And then just before I came to board meeting, I found out that the pharmacy tech program is accredited, and they received their notification of a six-year accreditation just this week.
Excellent. Thank you. Barbara.
Sorry, there was a question.
Oh. Yes, of course. The CDL training, is that in conjunction with Metropolitan or?
It is. We, yes.
The training is done there or?
Well, it's done, Karen, it's done, is it all done at Metro or is it? It's done here.
It's done here.
But we use their simulator and we, we use a lot of their resources, and so it is all done in a partnership.
We have that partnership, and it's going well.
It is.
Good, good.
Thank you. I'd like to highlight a few of the initiatives in our police department that signify greater emphasis on community partnerships and community policing. For instance, together with the DEA, we will hold our first prescription drug take-back initiative here on campus next Saturday, along with other locations in Overland Park. Earlier this week, our chief, Russell, offered our department's help to Overland Park Police Chief Douglas for today's interfaith memorial service at the Jewish Community Center, and this morning we received a call requesting that two officers come and assist there, and we were happy to provide that assistance. Finally, based on planning that's already taken place, the department will have the equipment and training necessary to have bicycle, bicycle patrols on campus by the Fall 2014 semester. Research has shown that officers on bicycles are perceived as more approachable than those in cars, and we want our students and visitors to feel at ease in approaching our officers. So I'm just really pleased with, with many initiatives that I see underway in our police department.
Thank you, Barbara. Andy?
Thank you. I don't have a lightning round item. I have maybe a year's worth of, which is kind of the way I do things.
Get together with Mr. Perkins.
Yeah, exactly. In all seriousness, this week, Tuesday morning, I attended the Fashion Merchandising Annual Celebration, Celebratory Breakfast. There were over 20 students. They all introduced themselves, the work they had done over the past year, and talked about the careers that they already have in that, coming out of that program. They were addressed by the manager of the Nordstrom's store at Oak Park Mall, which is a graduate of that program, which is very interesting. Went through and described her career over the past 13 years and how she started and has finally found her way back to Overland Park, but she's one of her own. She had some fascinating advice. But as I was listening to that, I found myself entering into this time of the year when we see the culmination of semesters and academic years. The honor symposiums, honor students are featuring presentations of their papers, their research. The Johnson County Community College International students presented their annual international fundraising dinner, which brings them together and effectively raises funds. If you follow the info list, you noticed today, or yesterday it was, I'm not sure which, the world mythology class is displaying exhibits referencing contemporary culture that comes from world mythologies. The list of things that students have been doing this, this academic year are just fascinating and demonstrate the sort of richness that Dr. Sobchak was talking about in terms of what the college offers the community widely. The success, as one has already been mentioned, the Johnson County Community College Model UN team is receiving top awards again in New York, they're at the, at the United Nations, actually. They recently hosted over 200 high school students at a Model UN here on campus. There have been 10, 10 of our students have their artwork being selected for exhibition in the Kansas City Artists Coalition undergraduate college student exhibition. I think 19 students Dennis might mention recently completed the Cavalier Student Leadership Development Program. The debate team finished second in the National Community College rankings and second in the Mid-America Regional Cross Examination Debate Association yearly rankings. Tavi Sikor was selected to the All-American team in debate. Only 30 debaters nationally are awarded that. So that program continues in its stellar fashion. The campus ledger and J.CAV, the student video broadcast media students came back today with over 24 awards at the annual spring conference of the Kansas Collegiate Media Association. The, the numbers of awards that our students have earned this year, it just goes on and on, and it's really quite moving to reflect upon. As I, as I almost tend to become a little, well, I do become sentimental, actually. When I'm not cynical, I'm sentimental. So I sort of, it's terrible mood swings, but it's what happens. This year, in these past few months, it's been interesting to see not only the students that are exiting, if you will, that are moving on to do great things, but to see the number of high school students that our college has brought onto this campus. Not only are we serving, if you will, the, the general population, but we are actively bringing students in into the campus. There were, again, the journalism department hosted the Take Five Film Festival. There were over 100 students here, many of them, I think there were 20 some winners, I can't remember exactly, that were showing short digital films, but they were also afforded opportunities to meet with professionals in the field, to show them how to, to do that more effectively. I just mentioned the Model UN with over 200 students. The math and science division has hosted regional science olympiads here every, for the past 20 years. There are over 25 middle schools and 20 high schools attended the past weekend, April 12th. The District 3 Kansas Junior Academy of Sciences was held here. The cosmetology students gave free prom services to high school students. And a program that I don't think gets referenced very often, but is quite remarkable, is the TIPS program. It's a transition into post-secondary studies. Those students, it's a collaborative effort between Johnson County Community College, Blue Valley School District, Gardner Edgerton Schools, and it's being expanded to include other high schools, but, but they bring special students into the, the school so that they can get help. It's a comprehensive, I should just read this, and it's a comprehensive transition program, provides selected high school senior students with specific learning needs the opportunity to experience college for the first time with extra support. It's remarkable that of those students, approximately 80% of the students who have completed this program are now currently enrolled in college, they're enrolled in job training or working full-time. Maggie Ackelson, Holly Dressler, Charlotte Walker, along with the Blue Valley Transition Specialists, have collaborated to make a really effective program. It is, it's quite remarkable. The Career Pathways Program, Ginny Naglik and the Transition Retention Specialists have presented over 350 high school students in the past semester, talking about career pathways, bringing students into the high school or to the college. Laurlee Stevens with College Now works effectively with the counselors across all the Johnson County high schools. It goes on and on, I've gone beyond my lightning round, but, but the, the number of programs that bring students to our college and, and prepare them to do great things is just really moving, and this is a special time of the year, and as we're looking at the budget, this is why we're looking at it. So I thank you for all your work and the support that you give us.
Thank you, Andy. That was a nice report, and also thank you for redefining lightning.
So thunder, thunder. Roll, rolls.
I have a top 10, of which Andy just read about five of them, but I'm going to do it anyway. This is not a total listing of everything that happens here, and I'll kind of provide a little bit more background for some of the things that Andy mentioned. For example, number one, yes, our Model UN team is in New York City. They're in Manhattan, they're actually at the United Nations Building. They won the Outstanding Delegation Award for their portrayal of Niger at the, at the conference. It's pretty exciting, and what people don't realize is that there are more than 3,000 students who compete in this thing. This is community colleges, universities, colleges. It's a huge deal. They basically propose resolutions and write, and write reports that deal with world issue. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to name the students who attributed to the success. Joe Gideon from Independence, Missouri. Ben Brown, Overland Park. Natalie Fuentez... Natalie Sefuentes Riano from Bogota, Columbia/Merriam. Linda McCow from Overland Park. Danielle Allison, Overland Park. Erin Swift, Olathe. Alicia Chow, Overland Park. Jeffrey Redman, Olathe. Donald Roth, Prairie Village. Caitlin Pratt, Baldwin. Amar Essa, Lenexa. Joe Biso, Gardner. Elizabeth Andrews, Tongan Noxy. Marie Kristen Horvath from Lingan, Germany, who's living in Lenexa. Ian Snead from Leewood, Kansas. Bennett Hofer from Olathe. What a great representation of Johnson County. And I'm relieved to see that no one was from Niger on our team. This award caps ten years of success for this program. The team has received awards at, at the last thirty consecutive conferences they've attended. Kudos to Dr. Brian Wright. He's our professor and Model UN advisor. I'm sure he'll be asking for his own building pretty soon. And I, I think it's, it's critical to note this remarkable opportunity that students who go here receive. It's really extraordinary. I happened to run into the team on a flight early Friday morning and they were sharing with me that when they announced these awards at these conferences, when they, they, they say the Outstanding Delegation Award from Johnson County Community College, there's this audible gasp in the room. Because you've got folks here from Ivy League schools, Big Ten schools.
Notre Dame.
Yeah, Notre Dame. I don't say anything. And, and to hear that Johnson County Community College is number one is really kind of mind-boggling for them, so that's terrific. Number two, we'd like to commend Christina Wolf, Assistant Professor of Spanish and French, for winning Best in Kansas at the Kansas World Language Association Conference. She outlined the development and implementation of JCC's Legal and Healthcare Interpreting Program. Wolf has taught at our college since nineteen ninety-two. She was hired to be the supervisor of healthcare and legal interpreting programs in two thousand and twelve. She'll now present her session at the two thousand and fifteen Central States Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Felicitaciones, Christina. It's terrific. Number three, we'd like to recognize student Mary Alice Coulter, the two thousand and fourteen Newman Civic Fellow. This award is given by Campus Compact, a national organization. The award honors student leaders committed to creating lasting change. It's sponsored by the KPMG Foundation. Campus Compact includes one hundred and ninety-five member colleges and universities from thirty-six states, DC and Mexico. Mary Alice is in our honors program. She's actually president of the Honor Students Association. Additionally, she's the winner of our very own college's Outstanding Student Award. Her area of study is math and physics. She aspires to get into engineering and biomedical engineering. She wants to be a veterinarian. Wouldn't you like your vet to have a biomedical engineering degree? She is currently employed by Wayside Waves. Number four, our Phi Theta Kappa announced several winners of the International Hallmark Awards. These are the early announcements that come prior to the, I guess, the major ones. We'd like to recognize Pat Decker, Alpha Iota Gamma, for her recognition as a distinguished chapter officer for the Team Hallmark Awards. Number five, again, compliments to Denise for her leadership of IS, but you need to know that this, that this department has been ranked in two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. That's quite a track record of accomplishment for our IS program here. Number six, on February fourth, we hosted our very own Take Five Cam Film Fest. Andy mentioned this. This was the tenth year, one hundred and thirty students and faculty from Shawnee Mission West, Shawnee Mission Northwest. Paola, Lewisburg, Yodora and Lawrence High Schools visited our campus. These workshops are led by area filmmaking and technology experts. The workshops included sessions on movie makeup, FX editing, lighting, GoPro use, scripting and storyboarding. One of the filmmakers presenting was Jonathan Dillon, a former Johnson County Community College student who helped establish the film festival and is now a Hollywood director, producer and editor. His session was from story to screen, a Hollywood insider's approach. Another session of interest was Blood, Guts and Zombies, which covered makeup techniques and according in the brochure, guaranteed to make you squirm. So kudos to Molly Baumgartner for pulling that together. It was really a nice event. I was able to drop by that and actually enjoyed some of the makeup on the students. Number seven, we'd like to recognize Lafayette Norwood, who was the golf coach and basketball coach here at our college. He is on a list of ten individuals who comprise the two thousand and fourteen Wichita Sports Hall of Fame Induction Class. Lafayette, and he's no stranger to being inducted into Hall of Fame. He's already a member of the Cowley College Hall of Fame, the Southwestern College Hall of Fame, the Wichita Biddy Basketball Hall of Fame, the Kansas Baseball Coaches Hall of Fame, the Wichita East Hall of Fame and the Oklahoma AAU Basketball Hall of Fame. He has coached for fifty-seven years, thirty-two of those here at our college. Number eight, we'd like to recognize the headliner award recipient that was given today, Sean Poloniak. Sean is the, I guess you could say, the CEO of Blacktop Creative, a marketing and, and advertising consulting firm. He took three hours today and spoke to students, three hours, filled Hudson Auditorium twice. So what a tribute to this program, to this award, and demonstrates another great opportunity for students to be able to listen to someone like that. Number nine, I'm just going to read to you something out of a teaching philosophy that was submitted by one of our associate professors of English, Sam Bell. She's full-time in the English Department and this represents what the faculty puts together with regard to their formative evaluation process. And I'd like to thank Laurie Reynolds for forwarding this to me. It was a very moving piece, I have to say, some pretty emotional. I'm going to read one part of the, part of it which pertains to how faculty interact with students here. And she writes, "At the close of the fall two thousand and twelve semester, I wrote all my students' letters, telling them what I know about them, why they matter, why they will succeed, thanking them for their contributions to our class. I have kept this tradition up, writing all my students' personalized letters. It is likely due to the anticipation of these letters that I rarely have late semester absences. I often have students waiting for his or her own letter during the last week of class. I am able to write these letters because I work hard at getting to know my students along with their strengths and weaknesses. I teach through discussions, sometimes at the expense of necessary instruction about more pragmatic skill sets, especially MLA formatting and mechanical errors to address." But this is interesting when she puts in this little self-critique, "I need to work on improving my teaching methods in order to have more balanced instruction among creativity, learning outcomes and technical writing issues." I think this demonstrates certainly her commitment to our students and the effort that faculty will take toward ensuring student success. Number ten is in the consent agenda, and so you'll just have to, to wait for that one. And that was supposed to be a joke. And lastly, I'd like to, last, I'd like to invite all of you to the international night this Friday. I believe it's a talent show. It's really a lot of fun and worthwhile. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, President Sobchak. In that, in that, in the report of the lightning rod, I, in, in my day job.
Lightning round.
Lightning round, rather. I said that last time, didn't I? The lightning round, when Dr. Corb mentioned the contract BNSF, in my day job at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're very happy about that because they generate a lot of room nights in our hotels and it's, it's a big deal for the community. So thank you very much. I don't believe we have any old business tonight, but I would like to discuss three new business items. One is the graduation schedule that I wanted to thank you for your participation. Trustee Musil led a good suggestion that we try and participate in, in all of those. And as Andy has said, May is going to be very busy with graduations, so I just wanted to thank you for that. Terry has the list, if you have not had a chance to visit with her about that, and we'll try and have a trustee at each of the graduation ceremonies that will be taking place in the next few weeks. I would like to appoint a nominating committee. It's that time of the, of the year to make nominations for the positions on the Board of Trustees. I've asked trustee Stewart and trustee Lindstrom to head up that nominating committee. They'll make a report back to our May board meeting for trustee board assignments going into next year. Trustee Musil mentioned the, the retirement reception this afternoon for Chief John Douglas of the Overland Park Police Department. And when Dr. Sobchak was mentioning the narrative of Sam Bell, I, I couldn't help but think again of, of Police Chief Douglas. Very nice ceremony this afternoon at the Rich Charles. Here's a man that spent forty-one years in Overland Park, beginning as, as was said, a silver-badged officer, writing tickets to a detective to police chief for the last eighteen years. And what was really personified was that here's a man that cared about his job, cared about his community, cared about his family and cared about immersing different cultures together. And being recognized by the United States Army and work he did nationally, as well as within Overland Park and within the county, is just really special. And so when you mentioned Sam Bell and her writing the letters to each of the kids, really personified caring for my students, and I know we have a lot of faculty that, that amplify and represent that same modeling. But I would like to take the opportunity, at least on behalf of the trustees and any trustee that would like to make an additional comment, to thank Chief John Douglas for his leadership in our county and in the city of Overland Park and certainly to our college, as I know he's been very involved with the Police Academy work as well. So we've, we've had the opportunity to work with a very good man who cared about what he did every day. And he said today, "I, I woke up every morning looking forward to going to work because I felt I mattered in the lives of other people." And that really, I think, personifies what Sam Bell has said too, she matters in the life of students. Any of the trustee want to make a comment regarding Chief Douglas's retirement today?
I've made mine.
Okay. Reports from board liaisons, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, that's where I was going with my collegial steering report. I would say that we're going to have an executive committee of KACC on May fifth in Hutchinson. Part of it has to do with some of the remarks that Dick Carter made about the legislature and it's been an interesting year as, as we try to represent KACC and move together as a body, but there were some instances of, of just needing to understand how we go forward as a state group. So we've decided to have, rather than a phone call in that month, to come together and we'll do that, like I say, on May fifth in Hutchinson. And then our next meeting of the KACC is June thirteenth and fourteenth in Garden City. If any of you are interested in traveling to the west for that meeting, please let me know. I have a TEAC meeting, Travel Industry Association of Kansas, on the twelfth in Emporia. And if you wanted to go with me to Emporia on the twelfth and then go on to Garden City from there, you're welcome to do that as well.
It'll start tomorrow.
Anyway, that's all I have for KACC Research Triangle. Mr. Musil?
The next meeting of the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle Board is next Tuesday, the twenty-second. I appreciate Chair Cook replacing me as I will be out of town. And then you should have received invitations to the Community Breakfast on Wednesday, the twenty-third. It is the five-year anniversary of the collection of the sales tax for the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle. It's been a very successful program with Edwards Campus, the K-State Innovation Campus and the KU Clinical Cancer Center. Really a unique model in America and very impressive that Johnson County once again led the way on that. So I'm, I'm sorry I'm going to miss the breakfast because I'll be out of town, but I'm sure we'll be well represented.
Any questions of trustee Musil? Faculty Association, Dr. Williams. And while Dr. Williams is coming up, we do have some concerns about her lack of proper accreditation and advanced degrees, but we're working with her on that and hopefully we can take care of that. Congratulations again on a great award and I didn't realize you were so astute.
Undecided. I tell people I'm a graduate student undecided or graduate student emeritus. Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here again. I made a lot, a few notes during the meeting, so I'd like to start by asking you to kind of dust off your budget report and turn to page eleven. I just had one item I'd just like to call your attention to. There was some comments about enrollment being down to the two thousand and six level. Just an observation, but the bargaining unit faculty number is down to the two thousand and six level as well. The notes that I made while the discussion was being had was that we're actually down twenty-five from our highest point, which was two, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. We're down eleven, as noted, from last year, but we are essentially the same number. We're one up from that two thousand and six number that was referenced with regard to enrollment. So that might fully flesh out our understanding of the costs and savings associated with revenue lost from tuition, but also revenue gained from salary and benefits that are no longer being paid to faculty members. The next item, just kind of, just for clarification purposes, I think you probably all know that I, I really enjoy my position as Faculty Association President. I take it very seriously. It's a privilege and an honor to be in this position. There's been a little confusion on campus, among faculty, not so much anyone else, but three of you have been, have received an email from me regarding just essentially the status of the Faculty Association. And I'm not implying that there's any confusion on behalf of the administration or the trustees, but I would just like to read something for the record. It's the Recognition Clause on page four of the Master Agreement in Section Two. "The Board of Trustees of the Johnson County Community College recognizes the association as the exclusive representative," as a term is used in KSA seventy-two fifty-four thirteen at SEEK, "of those regular full-time employees of the college duly appointed to fill positions as set forth in Addendum One." That's the bargaining unit. So just for the sake of clarity, the Faculty Association is the exclusive representative of the full-time faculty on this campus. I'd like to now move into some really great news. You've already discussed the Master Agreement Amendment, the proposed amendment that we've been working on so much this past year, since September, actually. And I'm happy to hear that the board approved it. What you didn't know was that the faculty ratification vote was in progress. I got the final numbers as of about five fifteen this evening. We closed the vote at, at five o'clock and I'm happy to report that the Master Agreement proposed amendment was ratified by the faculty. We had fifty-eight percent of the faculty vote, two hundred and four out of three hundred and fifty faculty members, with ninety-five percent approving and five percent not approving of the recommended changes. The numbers come out to a hundred and ninety-three, four and eleven against. So I'm happy to say that that task is behind us. And while it's finished, I think, as was referenced earlier, we are in a much better place as a, as a college, as a faculty group, as administration with regard to a section of the contract that's, while it's highly controversial, it's very important to have clarity in that section. And now we do, due to a lot of work and a lot of cooperative work. I always like to rep, to recognize the Faculty Association team members, and I'll do that again, Stu Schaefer, Jim McWard, Ron Palcic, Jeff Anderson and myself. But I'd also like to recognize Tanya Wilson, who has been extremely patient and extremely professional and extremely helpful in this whole effort, particularly with regard to the drafting of the language. As we negotiated that piece, obviously the discipline list was done a month ago and I'm sure everybody was wondering what was happening prior to it being launched. We had spring break and some other little logistical issues, but mostly we were working on the language. And I can't emphasize enough how valuable Tanya was to that process. So thank you as well for all that you contribute to helping us get this project done. Well, there's another vote underway and that's the Faculty Association Officer Election, which we just launched today. And you'll see some familiar names on the ballot, including mine for president. And I guess I'll just suffice it to say, if I'm here next month, you'll know the outcome. Again, I'd like to echo what everyone else has said about congratulating the Model UN team for their Outstanding Delegate Award. I'd also like to feature something that has not been featured yet, but is very important, the Earth Days, actually Earth Week, Earth Days, it starts tomorrow. And there are a lot of events planned, really creative, important, hands-on events like planting trees on campus on Tuesdays, the Campus Farm Lunch, where there will be an opportunity for anyone who participates to enjoy veggies that were grown on our own campus. But there's something creative here, Reuse Apalooza, where it's a swap, a clothing swap, and they're asking people to bring clothing and exchange. This is actually something that, I've attended several sustainability conferences and they have swap meets and particularly at universities where they have residential housing, it's very common to just have these kind of end- very common to just have these kind of end-of-the-semester or end-of-the-year swap events where you recycle and exchange goods that you no longer want, and so it's keeping with the spirit of sustainability, so I'm happy to see that that's a new addition to our usual events that celebrate the earth in numerous ways, including recognizing the many activities that's going on on campus. We also have a documentary screening of a movie called Chasing Ice, which is on glaciers. It's a cooperative event, apparently, between the Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church and the Kansas Interfaith Power and Light Church, so that's a real interesting alignment, and one that we are trying, as a community college in the community, to bring in multiple participants on these educational sustainability events. And it culminates with the Campus Farm Work Day on Friday, April 25th, where anyone, including trustees, are welcome to go to the farm and plant plants, plant veggies and the next season's crop, I suppose I should say. So with that, I think I've concluded my report, and I'd like to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any questions for Dr. Williams? Trustee Cross?
Just briefly, if I may. Dr. Williams, I know you have an environmental background, is that right? Why is the planting of a tree so important? Why is it so symbolic?
Well, there are a couple of, well, symbolic, that's a different question. Important, well, on our campus, there's an educational focus. We have a horticulture program, we have environmental science classes that could actually use those trees as teaching opportunities. We're trying philosophically to make the campus a learning laboratory, and we've made good on that with having a campus farm, and we have a pond, a prairie, and numerous resources that we've built right into our campus that we can teach, as a learning tool. And so planting trees and having that available to students and faculty for identification and learning purposes is an excellent advantage, and so that's the primary focus that was behind the grant to get the trees to plant, and then, of course, getting people, other educational pieces, to get people who may not otherwise have experience planting anything to actually get their hands dirty and plant, appreciate the life and the process of cycle of life, I suppose that you are helping to perpetuate.
I'm not sure what your personal time is tonight, but you still might have time to work on that fourth master's degree.
Well, the fourth one will be completed in the fall. It's the next one, I'm still trying to figure out what I should do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Consent agenda is an item where we handle a lot of routine items in one large vote. Is there any item that a trustee would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have an executive session this evening. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the Board's communication with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last no longer than 45 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Tanya Wilson, Judy Korb, Teri Schleist, Barbara Larson, Mark Ferguson, to join this executive session. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. The executive session will start at, how about 20 till? That'll give you seven minutes. Let's make it a quarter till, we've had kind of a long meeting. Quarter till, and 45 minutes later. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have completed our executive session of 45 minutes. We do need to go back into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client privilege, in order to protect the privilege in the Board's communication with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last not longer than 30 minutes. No action will be taken. The executive session will start at 7:30 and conclude at 8:00. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
My motion included the same people that were in the prior session.
I'm sorry, yeah. That includes Joe Sobchak, Tanya Wilson, Judy Korb, Teri Schleist, Barbara Larson, and Mark Ferguson. Thank you. We have just completed the extension of our 30-minute executive session. No action was taken. We are back in open session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.